All right. I'll call the board at 7:00 PM. Please stand before the public agents.
To the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic of America, this is an amendment under GAO and the difficult of original justice.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Okay, anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Motion to approve it. I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public comment. So this is the opportunity for anyone in the public to comment on items that are not listed on the agenda. Announcements? Approval of the minutes, so approval of the June 24, 2025 meeting minutes. I thought they looked good. I didn't see anything. I don't know about others. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve them. Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All right, public hearings. So. Consider application for conditional use permit to allow secondary driveway access. Ryan and Elena, Alana, Kneefel?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'll be handling the presentation on this conditional use permit application. Applicants have applied for a conditional use permit to allow a secondary curb cut at 10368 Windrose Curve. So staff learned earlier this summer of a second gravel driveway at 10386 Windrose Curve. The city code states that single-family homes shall be limited to one single-family driveway access unless a conditional use permit is approved to allow the second access. All driveways also must be surfaced with concrete, bituminous, or pavers. The property owner was notified of the violations and did elect to proceed with applying for a conditional use permit to request the legalization of the existing driveway rather than remove it. So the subject property is a corner lot on Windrose Curve and Meadow Road. The existing, there's an existing driveway off of Windrose Curve that leads to the applicant's attached garage, and the second access is proposed or is existing on the south side of the lot off of Meadow Road. So this, what's showing on the screen here is a copy of the survey highlighted in yellow on Windrose Curve is that existing driveway. And then the shed and driveway are shown as proposed. The existing shed, I believe, will have to be moved slightly to comply with setback requirements, and so no work has been done until after this process is completed. So it's just an aerial photograph showing the subject property. Just neighborhood conditions, basically to the northwest and south are existing detached single-family homes. To the east, the city does own an outlot. There is a stormwater pond located to the north northeast of the home, and there's also a storm sewer pipe located in that strip of land leading between the pond and Meadow Road. The proposed driveway is proposed off of Meadow Road, which is identified as a minor collector street in the city's 2040 transportation plan. It currently dead ends, but it will extend to the east when the property to the east develops. There are no immediate plans to develop the property to the east, but it is within the city's planned growth boundary. So Section 113-2 of the city code has basic criteria that must be evaluated when considering conditional use permits, and those criteria are: the proposed action has been considered in relation to specific policies and provisions of and been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan; the proposed use will be compatible with present and future land uses of the area; the proposed use conforms with all performance standards contained in the code; the use can be accommodated with existing public services and will not overburden the city's service capacity; and traffic generation by the proposed use is within the capabilities of the streets serving the property. So those are basic to every conditional use permit. And then in addition, the Section 11-9-8 has two additional criteria that are specific to secondary driveway accesses, and they state the additional access is necessary to provide onsite circulation, adequate onsite circulation, and the additional access shall create a minimum number of conflicts with through traffic movements and shall comply with the requirements of this chapter, meaning it has to be paved with the requirements and such. So it's really staff's opinion that the guidance that's in the current zoning ordinance doesn't adequately provide guidance for the secondary driveway access, specific, that there's just a lack of clarity, specifically the term circulation in, you know, one could determine that the term circulation implies that the secondary driveway access should only be allowed when they connect to the original driveway access and therefore providing circulation through the site. This would generally not be something that is typically found in single-family developments. Further, if a person on a corner lot were to construct a detached garage that fronts on a corner, on that corner side street, the proposed driveway to serve it, that even wouldn't meet circulation criteria if that's how you define circulation. While it is not typical to construct a driveway leading to a shed, as proposed in this application, the zoning ordinance does not explicitly state that a driveway must lead to a garage or shed. So that is kind of throughout, through reviewing this application, we do think this is something we should review in the future as a planning commission and add more clarification here and then determine if we will require a driveway to detached garages or sheds. So zoning ordinance modifications may be appropriate in the future. The applicant did submit a letter with his application. It was included in the packet and related to this particular topic of satisfying these two criteria. The applicant who is present today did offer the following justifications for onsite circulation: that the additional driveway is essential for effective and practical use of my property; it provides direct access to the rear shed for storing equipment and supplies; without it, moving items, especially in the spring and fall when the ground is typically soft and saturated, would be impractical and potentially damaging to the yard. States that there is no conflict with the through traffic, which is the second criteria. The shed is located off of Meadow Lane, a stub street with minimal traffic and no current through traffic. The driveway does not obstruct visibility, pedestrian flow, or vehicle operations. It is safely located with clear separation from the intersection or heavy traffic areas. While I understand that future development may eventually extend Meadow Lane, the spacing of this access in relation to the newly constructed residence, the nearest newly constructed residence would remain practical and non-disruptive. And then also states that pending the outcome of your and the city council's action related to the application, the driveway would be paved, and once paved, the access would comply with surface and dimensional standards outlined in the city code. Its design will remain consistent with the neighborhood aesthetics and not adversely impact adjacent properties. So in the event, you know, typically staff does have a clear recommendation regarding applications, but because the criteria could be interpreted different ways, we have developed findings for a recommendation for approval or a recommendation for denial. I have my slides ordered swift. I'm sorry. I meant to have this one before here, but I think in a nutshell, you can see that you could argue that it is really not, does not meet the current code necessarily for onsite circulation, or you could argue that it is needed for access to the shed. And whatever you recommend, the city, or the planning commission is being asked to hold a public hearing regarding the request for a conditional use permit to allow the secondary curb cut and make a recommendation to the city council. And this is the first application since I've been employed with the city for a secondary driveway access. We don't have any history that, since I've been here.
There is one, I think it was Todd. He built an additional garage and a piece of property adjacent to his. I can't remember his name. He used to be on a planning long time ago, and then he designed and then he hired a garage.
Must be more than 10 years ago.
Oh, it was, yeah.
Oh, thank you for that.
Thank you, Renee. All right, so I will open the public hearing at 7:11 PM. If you wish to comment on the application for conditional use permit to allow secondary driveway access, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
You may.
My name's Ryan Kneefel. I live at 10368 Windrose Curve. I have the secondary access. And I'll be honest with you, I'm not trying to skirt the rules. I just, I want to have a quality property. I want to maintain it nicely, make it look like the rest of everybody else's, and I'd rather not track material out onto the Meadow Lane when I'm accessing it in the spring and the fall when, I mean, I'm going to be rutting it up because I back my truck right up to the shed, get my four-wheeler, you know, all the different stuff out of there. So again, I'll do whatever you guys want. I'm not trying to skirt the rules. I have the equipment to move it to where it is in compliance with easements and whatnot, and I do plan on paving it if this does go through, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? No, okay, thank you. All right, I will ask again if anyone wants to comment on the application for conditional use permit to allow secondary driveway access. Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And I'll ask one last time. If you'd like to comment on the application for conditional use permit to allow secondary access, secondary driveway access, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, I will close the public hearing at 7:13 PM. Thoughts, questions, remarks?
I think we've done it before, like, I say, like, maybe 15 years ago with a guy that had a big enough lot where he could add a garage in the front, and then he had this house garage and then a garage on the other side of a little wood. It's your neighbor down the road.
Park Street.
Park Street, yeah. So it was paved, I believe.
Yes.
And I think it was a garage, not a shed, but I mean, it was.
It's a big garage, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was the only one I can think of, so. And I understand the access in sheds. I have a garage in my backyard that I have trouble accessing sometimes of the year, but this is a different situation. He's on a corner lot, so I don't know. I don't have a real issue with it myself, other than moving it where it needs to be, I guess, and paving it, so.
Right.
I agree with you on that. I think as long as he does those things, he'd be fine by me as well.
Sure. It's hard to foresight, like, any through traffic with the future development.
Yeah.
It's the only thing that comes to my mind, but it's hard to picture that, so, or know what it would look like.
That I think the use be frequent enough that it's.
Yeah. Not going to be a conflict even.
Okay.
When it's.
Is a line that is adjacent currently in the city? Is it?
In the township.
It is township.
Yeah.
So it would have to be annexed first.
Yeah.
Okay. I personally don't have any concerns either. It does sound like we need to look at that ordinance again, just clarify that language, but, you know, if it's no public safety concerns, then.
So the easement is for drainage, is it?
It's a storm sewer pipe through there.
Oh, okay, all right. I mean, it's not a ditch in there, so it's not.
Yeah, so the outlot adjacent to his lot is for a storm sewer pipe, and then there's just the standard drainage and utility easements around the perimeter of the lot.
Sure.
So we just ask that the shed meet setback requirements to that east lot line and south lot line, which is the right-of-way, and be outside of any easements.
Yeah, I agree.
The shed.
And that circulation piece just means, like, travel through, through the property? Is that what that means? Like, we don't know?
It's, yeah, it's up to interpretation, I think. Even when we talked about it internally, it's, two people thought this and two people thought that, so I, we just think the code needs to be more clear.
Confusing language. Okay.
So what do we need, a recommendation?
We need a motion and a second and a recommendation.
I'll make a motion to what was recommended with the moving of the shed and the pavement or the asphalt or cement or whatever he was going to do to it for access.
I'll second. And then make a recommend, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we make a recommendation?
You just did.
No, you just said.
What did?
Yeah.
All right, all in one, got it.
Okay.
All right.
That's good news.
Thank you.
Yes, on to the city council now.
Yeah, this will move down to the city council as soon as we can get it on the agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, public hearing, consider application for preliminary plat approval of Old Town Apartments, second edition, Old Town Apartments applicants.
Okay, the applicant is not here tonight, and this is the second phase of an existing apartment building. There are a lot of slides, and I'm going to kind of cruise through them because you have technically seen this in the past. It's an application for preliminary plat approval of Old Town Apartments, second edition. The developers acquired this four-acre property in October of 2022. It's owned high-density residential. They developed a plan to construct 72 apartment units contained in two separate buildings, 72 detached garage stalls, or garage stalls, and 84 at-grade parking spaces. The first phase was started in 2023 and completed in the summer of 2024. That building is fully leased up. I understand it has a waiting list for some unit types. The second and final phase is now being proposed. Oops, forgot to start the show. This is one of Jake's old fly-in. They used to drive me crazy. They have also submitted a request for final plat approval that will be considered directly by the city council. They do hope to start construction yet this year. So this is the copy of the final plat. This is the, basically, site plan, preliminary plat drawing that was submitted. These are the exterior building elevations of all sides. It's going to be an exact replica of the existing building. These are the detached garages, kind of that long bank of detached garages. I zoomed in on the front exterior, just a clip of it, because the top renderings were a bit difficult to visualize. So you can see the front and the back and the south and north side there. These are pictures of the existing building, so it would be duplicated. The conference plan guides the property to high-density residential surrounding. The neighborhood conditions are basically high-density residential to the north, to the west, to the south is commercial, to the east is low-density residential and commercial. My gosh, this is going to drive me crazy. I'm sorry. Apartments containing more than eight units are permitted use in the zoning district. The lot is 2.3 acres. The density required by our comprehensive plan is 10 to 30 units per net acre. With this overall, the overall development achieves 17.7 units per acre. This particular phase is 15.5 units per acre, just because they had, this lot is a little bigger than the first lot that was plotted. The proposed building does meet all setbacks from all property lines and a little more. If you recall, there was a conditional use permit issued for increased building height. It's approximately three feet higher than the 35-foot height that is allowed, so they increased the setback slightly to account for that maximum building height. That previous conditional use permit in the adopting or approving documents approved by the council, it already approved that for this lot. Dexer, the code also regulates a number of other things related to multifamily or high-density, related to decks or porches, exterior building finishes, utilities, and screening, driveways, need to allow for snow storage area. There's open space and requirement for the project residents. There will be an open space area between the two buildings that is at least 10% of the gross development area so that the residents will have some usable open space. And then the site must contain at least 30% of landscaping, or the site must contain 30% landscaped area, and foundation plantings are required around the buildings. 68 parking stalls are required for the 36-unit building. 77 stalls are proposed, so there's over, there's 17 garages in the main apartment building. They're kind of that tuck-under or on the first floor of the building. There's 19 detached garages and 41 at-grade spaces. The parking lot will be paved and curbed and striped. Tree inventory was conducted. There are five significant trees on the property which will be removed and replaced on the site through their new landscaping plan. Says their landscaping plan, it's maybe a bit hard to read, but there'll be a healthy amount of landscaping along the east side of the site particularly. In addition, the, to a 20-foot-wide landscape buffer where lots of but major collector streets, those, that landscaping buffers to be in two staggered rows of plantings and a four-foot berm is required unless determined by the city engineer that is not feasible. They have incorporated berm into their grading plan. It's not quite four feet high, I think three-ish.
Three feet at the right-of-way for a good part of it. There is room to make the north part higher to have three feet from the right-of-way, but it will be four feet higher.
Okay.
Pretty effective screen from the roadway.
Okay. There are easements that exist along the south and east property line that we're taking with the original plat. There is not currently easement on the west or on the west property line, and on the north property line, there's a big gas easement. We are recommending an easement on that west property line of 10 feet. There are no wetlands or floodplains on the property. Sanitary sewer will serve the building from an existing stub off of Old Town Road, as will water. Storm sewer, this is kind of the main storm sewer. Things will kind of be funneled in the parking lot to the center of the parking lot. In addition, there are some roof drains and from both the garage and the building that will also feed into the storm sewer system, which will then connect to existing pipes within catch basins within Old Town Road, which discharge to the stormwater pond next to the New Market Bank or next to the strip mall on the east side. Access to the site will be from the existing curb cut. Dakota Avenue is a major collector street, and Old Town Road is a local roadway. Those just the one curb cut, already in place. There's an existing eight-foot trail along Dakota Avenue. The city does maintain and plow that trail. There's a planned five-foot sidewalk on the south side of the site. And the Parks Commission has recommended cash in lieu of land for this apartment building site. The city, no, there were no comments from anybody other than the city engineer. He provided some red-line plans today that weren't available when the packet was sent out, but comments are minimal.
Very important.
But very important, I agree, just adding a drain tile in a shallow sort of. And a catch basin, that's correct. So staff recommend approval of the preliminary plat. There were, oops, sorry, I don't know what I did there.
Is that in the yard between the two buildings or?
I'm suggesting they put a catch basin on the north side of that sidewalk where the drainage comes behind those new garages, or that will constantly be running across the sidewalk.
I can point that out, too, if you want to see it on a larger plan, but I hope to switch plans, so. The one thing that we didn't catch, and I want to point out, and it was a complete oversight of just probably lack of communication or a lack, lack of clarification with the first building, the utility meters, there was nothing in the plan that indicated all of the utility meters were going to be on that street-facing side of and of the building, and that won't happen in the second phase. The code does not allow that, so. It's specifically listed as a condition here because it was an oversight on the first one, so. No real comments, but the planning commission is required under statute to hold a public hearing regarding the application for preliminary plat and provide a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing at 7:28 PM for consider application for preliminary plat approval of Old Town Apartments, second edition. If anyone wishes to state or comment on this, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And there's still no one online?
Still no one.
Okay. All right, I will ask again. If anyone wishes to comment on the application for preliminary plat approval of Old Town Apartments, second edition, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And I'll ask a third time. If anyone wishes to comment on the application for preliminary plat approval of Old Town Apartments, second edition, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I will close the public hearing at 7:29 PM. All right, comments, questions?
No, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
It was planned a long time ago, so.
Thanks for clarifying on the utility thing, because when I read that, I was like, why is that in there? That makes sense now.
Yeah.
Was it facing the north then?
Yeah.
Or where's south?
On the exist, yeah.
On the existing.
Well, that will be up to them, but I assume it will face the north. I think that's the only, well, and they could put it on the front, which, but, yeah.
I have a question. Are they going to grade that northeast corner into that lot that no one claims other than the utility or the gas easement or?
They will confine their grading operations to their property.
So what are we going to do with that? So what are we gonna do with that? Isn't that gonna look out of place still? And not contiguous to anything?
I don't know, but yeah, they're, they can't grade off the property.
Oh, I will. I can bring up the grading plan if you want to see it.
Do you have a street view of that area?
I do, yeah, I'll bring that up.
Because I just don't know. If no one maintains it, if no one does anything with it, it'll just be a blight.
We'll seek Brandon on the owner of the property.
The gas company?
I couldn't.
Yeah, yeah. Because didn't they get rid of everything and blade it below grade or ground now?
I think all the equipment's been removed during that.
I think it's been removed.
I don't know if the ownership has changed, so. Be that gas company's problem. We can take a look and if there's something actionable or a lot of, we've got their contact info.
Okay, so this is.
Whether they'll respond, I don't know, but we can at least tell them.
Says Dakota.
Because those trees are going away.
Yeah, everything will be cleared and it'll be leveled.
It's the, where the weeds are there.
Yeah, right. So it is right here.
Seeing worse.
Well, that's not what it looks like now, I don't believe, but.
Sure.
Like those pipes are gone, right? Are they?
I think that they are.
Yeah, I guess so.
Uh, yeah, this is a 2023 photo, so. And I also noticed, when I was looking at the aerial photo, that. When I was out at the site taking some pictures, I noticed that there's some land kind of between the townhouses and the apartment site that just isn't really being taken care of or, you know. And it looks like there is a bit on the, on the townhouse side that's not being mowed. So you can see the new, the first apartment building here, they did landscape all the way up to their property line and they're mowing. But on the townhouses, there's an area where they're not mowing. So when the site develops, we'll keep an eye on that.
What will the grade be? I mean, is that gonna be a?
They'll have to match existing.
Yeah, so it'll be. So that's what I'm wondering is if, who's responsible for that corner piece in the future? And what's it gonna look like? I mean, it's just gonna be something that trees will grow up in and people will be like, what's there, you know?
An undeveloped piece of property.
An undeveloped bowl piece of property too, right?
Perhaps that.
Because it's, no one owned, I mean, other than the utility.
They actually own it.
But I would like maybe the parks to talk to them, huh? Let's parks department. Parks and trails people, because if their trail went around it, so. Maybe let the city mow it sometime.
I'm sure Cory would love to take that, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments or questions? No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
What do we need from?
Uh, we need, so you opened and closed the public hearing and we now we need a.
I opened and closed already.
Yep.
That's done, so you just need a motion from us?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to.
Recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Old Town Apartment Second Edition.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for preliminary plat approval for Old Town Apartments Second Edition. All in favor?
With the conditions contained in the staff report.
Yes, correct.
Nicole, and who seconded that?
Me.
All right, on to general business. A review concept plan for Eagleview Meadows, Joe Sullivan applicant.
All right, so tonight you guys will be reviewing a concept plan from Joe Sullivan, and we're calling it Eagleview Meadows. So the property is owned by Joe Sullivan and is approximately 80 acres. It's located in the northwestern portion of the community. A concept plan was submitted in 2021 and reviewed by staff, but it did not make it in front of the Parks Commission, Planning Commission, or City Council. An updated concept plan was recently submitted to the city for review, and tonight the owner is interested in receiving feedback from you guys. So as you see here, this is the location of the proposed development as indicated by the red boxes and yellow arrow. This is the concept plan that was reviewed by city staff in 2021. Kind of the same layout, but also a lot of changes, as you'll see. So this is the, this is the current concept plan that we're discussing tonight. Like I said, essentially similar layouts, but less cul-de-sacs. A little bit more conducive to better movement throughout. The neighborhood conditions, to the south of the proposed development is two rural properties. One of those is vacant and one of those contains a single-family residence. Both of those properties are located outside of the city limits, but are within the 2040 growth area. To the east of the proposed development are large-lot rural residential properties that are approximately 10 acres in size with single-family homes on them. The properties to the east are located outside of the city limits, but within the 2040 growth area. To the north of the proposed development are large-lot rural residential properties that are approximately 10 acres in size, all with single-family detached homes constructed on them. The properties to the north are located outside of the city limits, outside of the growth area, but within the city's ultimate sewer service boundary. And to the west of the proposed development is the proposed Highlands at Eagleview development that we recently reviewed, and the new Prague Eagleview Elementary School, both located within the city limits. So the proposed use of the property for single-family residential homes meets the intent of the 2040 comprehensive plan. The 2040 comp plan calls out a preferred residential density of 2.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre, and this concept plan contains 194 lots on 72 acres, which equates to 2.7 units per acre. So we're within the range. This slide just shows the ultimate sewer, ultimate sewer service area boundary for the city. As indicated by the red box, this property is within our service area. The current zoning authority is Scott County, and it is currently zoned urban expansion reserve. The property would be automatically zoned to urban reserve if it's annexed into the city. The future zoning must be consistent with the 2040 comp plan, thus requiring it to be residential, at least 2.5 units per net acre, and would require a PUD unless the city amends the minimum lot size standards before preliminary plat application is received. This slide shows the proposed lot width, area, and setbacks for the development. Based on this information, the development would require PUD zoning, but as I alluded to a little bit in the last slide, staff notes that the planning commission intends to review these minimum lot standards in the upcoming months. So depending on the outcome of that review, straight zoning may be an option for this development. The tree preservation requirements state that 40% of significant trees must be preserved, and a tree inventory will need to be completed. This property has been predominantly agricultural, so there's a few trees on site. The landscaping, so 20 feet of additional lot depth must be provided where lots back up to major collector streets for a landscape buffer. 10 feet of additional lot width must be provided where lots are adjacent to major collector streets, which in this development is Nevada 255th and Dakota Avenue. The typical minimum lot depth is 120 feet, but it'll have to be 140 planned along those collector streets. The landscape buffer will, must meet a designated easement area, and a landscaping plan will be required. This slide depicts the sanitary sewer plan with the majority of the property falling into the W5 area. Sanitary sewer service is available on this southwest side of this property along Nevada Avenue via six, six-inch PVC sewer force main. There's a lift station and force main that are proposed in Highlands at Eagleview, which will serve this property. And sewer service must be extended through the development and to adjacent property boundaries. Water service is also available on the west side of the property along Nevada Avenue via 12-inch ductile iron pipe. 12-inch water main or an equivalent of that must be extended through development consistent with the 2040 water plan, and water main must be extended to the northern boundary of the plat. Water service must be extended through development and to adjacent properties. So this property lies within both the Scott and Vermillion watershed management organizations. The area shown in Crosshatch has a discharge rate that's more stringent than the existing runoff rate allowed in the other areas of the city. Extra restrictions were in agreement between the city and township as part of the school development and are meant to protect downstream properties from erosion and from flooding. 36-inch and 48-inch HDPE line exists along the entire east side of this property and flows north under 250, under 250th Street where it discharges to the surface. For stormwater, there are five ponds shown on this concept plan. Ponds will, as usual, need to be dedicated to the city as an outlot, and city must access, city access must be provided for. If possible, the developers should attempt to minimize the number of ponds. A 10-foot vegetative buffer and 35-foot building setback are required for all these ponds, and just based on this concept plan, the required 35-foot building setback will likely impact some of the lots depicted, specifically on that southeast pond. So city staff are aware that there is an existing drain tile line that runs through this property, which provides agricultural drainage for the subject property and for the property to the south. The existing drainage pattern must be perpetuated, and during a DRT meeting, township representatives also inform city staff that there is more drain tile that's not on this map to the northeast that we'll keep an eye out for. There are no DNR-protected wetlands or FEMA floodplains located. A wetland delineation was done in 2021 and is valid through November of next year. There is 1.23-acre wetland located along the west side of this parcel. Wetland buffers and wetland sign markers will be required, and wetlands will need to be conveyed to the city as an outlot. This property borders on Nevada and Dakota Avenue, which are both identified as major collector streets. The city transportation plan also identifies 255th Street as a major collector, which is the road that runs east-west through this property. So the major collector streets, the purpose of a major collector is typically to link neighborhoods together within a city or link businesses to neighborhoods. Access to collector roadways should be made via local streets, and no driveway should be allowed on them. Public street connections to major collector streets should be spaced at least 660 feet apart, and the standard is 100 feet of right-of-way, 32-foot wide street, B618 curb, 10-foot trail on one side, 5-foot sidewalk on the other. So for Nevada Avenue specifically, there's a 35-foot right-of-way that exists on the west side of this property, and then plus 15 for Highlands, so 50 feet must be in accordance with this plat. Only a small section of the road is constructed near the southeast corner of the property. City code would require that Nevada Avenue is constructed to the northernly property line of the plat, and the city would request a 33-foot strip of land to the north also plotted as right-of-way with a proposed 80-acre plat. Gravel road for Dakota Avenue is, Dakota Avenue is a gravel road that abuts the city or that abuts this property on the east side. It's under the jurisdiction currently of New Market Township. There's currently 33 feet of roadway easements, and a total of 50 right-of-way, 50 feet of right-of-way must be dedicated as part of the plat. City code would also require that Dakota Avenue is constructed, is constructed adjacent to the plat. If the gravel section to the south of the property is not paved, the city would consider this development premature. In discussions with the city and the township, these are some ideas that we've had regarding Dakota. The gravel road to be paved, is to be paved from existing pavement termini to the northern edge of this plat. Rather than the 32-foot curb and gutter standard, we would allow for the rural section to remain with ditches and pave a minimum 26-foot surface with gravel shoulders. Once paved, the maintenance will be taken over by the city from the township. Improvement would be required for any local street connections that are made. We would instruct them to improve it when approximately 2/3 of the development is constructed. So this development will start on the west side, and, you know, if they get to 2/3 and the road isn't constructed yet, we would not allow them to continue until the road is constructed. And a pre-development agreement and orderly annexation agreement could document these expectations. 255th Street, the east ring, the street running east-west, shown here on the concept plan. It shows 80-foot of right-of-way in the notes, but we require 100 feet. A 10-foot, a 10-foot wide trail would be required on one side and a 5-foot wide sidewalk on the other, and local street connections, we believe, do not meet the 660-foot spacing requirements. A couple instances on the northwest, on the northeast, southeast, it looks like they're, the roads are a little close together. So for all these local roads in this development, temporary cul-de-sacs must be constructed if the street stub exceeds 150 feet in length. The local road proposed to be connected to Dakota Avenue at the northeast corner of the plat should instead be extended north-south to the northern property line, so that road east, far east to the north to the side of the pond, we would ask, they would go straight up rather than connecting over to Dakota. Future road extension signs are required. The maximum length of a cul-de-sac street is 500 feet measured from the center line. Concrete driver abrams shall be constructed from the curb to the property line, and as always, boulevards will be sodded or, sodded, seeded or blanketed. Based on the city code and the 2040 comp plan, the following sidewalk and trail improvements are recommended within the plat. Construct 5-foot sidewalks adjacent to all local streets. Trail on the north side of 255th. 5-foot sidewalk on the south side of 255th. 5-foot sidewalk on the east side of Nevada. 10-foot trail on the west side of Dakota. We took this to the Parks Commission on the 13th. So the city subdivision ordinance requires 8% of the land be dedicated for parks, playgrounds, et cetera. If no land dedication is required, the park fee has been established at 8% of the fair market value, and the estimated park dedication for this plat would be 6.3 acres. So the city's 2040 park and trail plan identifies a neighborhood park search area near the southern portion of the property. And here are just some things that you could typically expect within a neighborhood park, such as play equipment, ballfields, tennis, pickleball, ice rinks, et cetera. So the Parks Commission recommended full parkland dedication for the proposed Eagleview Meadows development. Parkland location to be centrally located along the southernly edge of the plat, so that as the properties to the south develop, additional land can be added to the park and create one big nice park. The land to be dedicated for park purposes must have topography and configuration conducive to developing the park. Construct these sidewalks and trails as spoke on earlier, and the parkland dedication as depicted would need to be reconfigured to provide more usable space. So we'll get back to that later, but that big pond right in the middle of there, and just some other topography issues. Annexation, to develop the property as depicted, annexation is required from the township. The developer and the owner may petition the city for an annexation. The city then works with the township regarding joint resolution for orderly annexation, and a pre-development agreement will be required. Some miscellaneous stuff, the developer, we would ask that they would hold a neighborhood meeting as we thought that went really well with Highlands at Eagleview. And then Ghost Plat, we just wanted to throw this in there because it's still a requirement and it was a big topic in our last one. So we just wanted to state and restate that it does not indicate city support or approval and that city growth only occurs when a willing seller sells land to a willing buyer. And also a traffic study will probably need, need to be happening for this plat. So the requested action from you guys tonight is as follows. So the planning commission is being asked to provide feedback regarding the concept plan and whether annexation of the property into the city would be recommended based on this plan. Feedback is also being sought from planning commission regarding the proposed local roads, just in general, spacing on 255th. And then, does the planning commission concur with the 33 staff recommendations as outlined in the staff report? And if not, please specify which ones. So I figure we start with number one, go down the list. And I'll put it, I'll put this up here, and then I can switch back over to the requested action whenever you guys want. Just let me know.
So it looks like the first staff recommendation is the property is currently located in New Market Township. That is adjacent to the city limits of Elka New Market. The property requires annexation. The property requires annexation prior to the development, a joint resolution, an orderly annexation, which outlines the terms of the annexation must be agreed to the city and the township.
Those are just all the recommendations?
Right, that's what you were going through?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess we can start by just overall high-level feedback and whether or not something that looks like this would be supported and recommended to be annexed into the city.
Nick, could you bring up just the concept plan again, just the overall?
Or the very last in your, is that it? Overlay one or what's that?
I was thinking this one.
I don't have an overlay one.
Oh, you don't have it on?
This is as, this is essentially an overlay one.
Thinking about the ones with the different neighborhoods?
The ones with all the neighborhoods, yeah, the one in the very last.
I created a fancy.
Did you?
I put Highland, yeah, I put all the different Highlands and stuff on.
Was it in this present?
The last on the packet.
It's, um.
You could just bring up the kind of.
Or the packet.
No, it's, he, it's, he's talking about one that would show Highlands superimposed, so.
Do you want to just share your screen?
Yeah, I'll bring it up.
It looks like everything to the west matches, but not to the south, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Figure out the park area there.
Yep, yep. And that is, hold on.
Yeah, oh wait, yeah, is that the last one in the packet?
Yeah. Okay, so I am going to zoom in a little bit here. And I want to clarify that, yeah, it doesn't, so the city provided a high-level, so a high-level concept was submitted back in, I don't know, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty maybe, for this thirty-five acres to the south. And we made our comments and then they never resubmitted. But one of our comments was, you know, park dedication would be required here. So that owner is no longer really.
Active.
Active or may even own the property, but.
So this park that they're talking about is this lower pond and the land around it. Is that the required size for the acreage or what?
It, it says it is, it's hard, you can't, you can't measure it, but yes.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Six acres or whatever it says.
Yep, yep. But as you see, like, the pond is right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So that upper-left portion isn't really too usable and, so we would need to reconfigure it, but that's essentially the amount of land we would need.
And, and to be honest, we were a little bit unclear if that six acres shown there included the area of the pond or didn't include the area of the pond, so that's a question. Anything below the ordinary high-water mark does not count towards park dedication.
I think it's a thought-out plan, it looks good to me, I think so. I don't know, like, about that comment on that northeast exit, just going straight, I don't know.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, just to avoid two connections with Dakota and also just to provide future availability for road if those parcels develop.
Yeah, so I think that is, it is one thing that staff did recommend elimination of that connection to Dakota and just an extension of this as we continue to review it.
And I like the comment of completing the road. I mean, which, you know, this is what I had a question on with the last development was who owns that parcel where the road is partially on and not on, so.
Well, I, I did want to make a correction to Brandon's presentation regarding Nevada Avenue because typically, yeah, now there would be, there's the full right-of-way. So the right-of-way in Highlands is dedicated, now the right-of-way in this plat will be dedicated. However, there, the discussion is currently that Nevada Avenue would only be constructed in the future when it is needed to extend north to two hundred and fiftieth street, which is in the township. I'm going to pan north a little bit.
Not to the end of the property?
We just can't come up with a need for it.
So these roads would.
But would it go to that northerly road though, no?
No, but we do recommend those two east-west roads in development be connected across Nevada. So the developments are connected. But that north-south piece from two fifty-fifth to two fifty-third, we can't see a need for it. There's a road that's equal in service just to the right of it and another one just to the left of it. So there's adequate access of two fifty-fifth into the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods are cross-connected. But building that piece of road, we'd rather see the resources go elsewhere. It's a road we would have to maintain for no real purpose. It can't go anywhere to the north probably for a very long time. So it becomes kind of a road to nowhere. So we're, and we had a spirited discussion about this, this issue because normally we do like to acquire those when it's opportune. But at the same time, building roads with no purpose doesn't serve anybody.
But what do these people's backyards end up being? Just like ten-foot leaves, trees and whatnot?
The city mows it now and it will continue to do so.
Well, the city mows that?
Not, not, no, no, like a yard, but it would be a, a right-of-way. There will be a pond on the one side and then the backyards will back up to an open right-of-way, basically a field, you know, grassy field.
And someone puts a shed on it accidentally and.
We can handle that with the prop, city property signs we now require at the back of interfaces like that.
I guess if there's no maintenance need for it, I guess that, other than just like you say, mowing a right-of-way, it would just be a, an improved alleyway basically, right? But a wide.
Right-of-way is very valuable.
The wide, it'll be a wide.
Are more valuable than the road.
Yeah.
So you do want to capture that for the future, for that connection to two fifty-fifth perhaps someday, whether it's a major collector at that point or something less. But the road itself at this time and for the foreseeable future, we just don't see a need for it.
I see.
In the future, would it be the city's responsibility to get that road done or the future development?
Most likely the city would have had a hand in it, but even if that road was built today, by the time it's needed, you'd probably have to rebuild it at city expenses, so.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no, I, I don't see a savings to the city in having it built now. In fact, it'd be a liability.
So this wasn't talked about and it was like during the development review team meeting and it was also, well, actually, I think it was, maybe a bit of an afterthought, but Mr. Sullivan also owns a strip of land, I think thirty-three feet in width, that does extend all the way up to two hundred and fiftieth street and the city would be interested in acquiring that or having that included or acquiring it somehow. So that recommendation is included in this, in the conditions of.
A continuation of Nevada.
Yeah, so it's just to facilitate, again, this long-term road and utility infrastructure. It's recommended the city acquire the strip of land extending from the proposed development up to two hundred and fiftieth street as right-of-way. And the city does own a right-of-way at thirty-three feet on the other side where this existing, existing storm sewer line is.
Yeah, so connecting the streets on the north end but not having it turn.
Connecting the two neighborhoods on what would be two fifty-third, I think, we think makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. And I think that we're in a good point with the township where we all kind of agree that there shouldn't be any road connections made to gravel streets unless a portion of them is paved out to a realistic arterial street, arterial road. So I, I think at this point, the city has no, you know, intention of constructing that, that street. We don't have the money to, we don't think it serves any purpose. And two hundred and fiftieth street is a gravel street. We would never support, we wouldn't support that nor would the township.
But in the comments you made at the property to the south, that they would just pave that area, that thirty acres or forty acres to the south, it would be part of this deal you're saying?
If it's not paved by the time they would need to, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right here, so the pavement stops here, can you see?
Yeah. Yep.
Do you have anything to add that you'd like to add?
Madam Chair, Commissioners Joe Sullivan, Eden Prairie, Minnesota. Nice to be in front of you again. Yeah, we were here a year or so ago, or time flies, thereabouts. Got the Parkway Meadows done and that's under construction moving forward. So appreciate your help with that effort. This is a little bit bigger project, but similar. We are putting forward a thoughtful community. It's trying to address a need in the market for, you know, entry-level homes. Trying to create a community and neighborhood in close proximity to the not-so-new elementary school. It's been waiting twenty-five years for a neighborhood to surround it and that's finally starting to happen. The design we put forward is thoughtful, efficient. It's an attempt to meet your density requirements. And if we change it a lot, that becomes more difficult. So I ask you to keep that in mind as you consider feedback and suggestions on what might be done differently. But it's, it's difficult to get to your density requirements if we do a lot, a lot of things different, I guess. I'm available for questions too as you get into more of a conversation or discussion.
I understand the center ponding is because the lot itself is low in that area.
That's the terrain, that's certainly the terrain, yeah.
But the other ones are for the, for the.
Retention.
They're all, they're all. Yeah. Terrain-based as well as look for opportunities where the terrain and the space coincide. There may be some room to shift things somewhat, but.
But those are the minimum sizes needed or the approximate?
I think they're largely, you know, they're probably in the ballpark. Their, their engineer has certainly done this before. But even Nick says, you know, these are kind of to show.
Area.
Concept, they're not final designs.
Placeholders.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it looks planned out very well, so.
What are the lot sizes on the adjacent property?
Same.
The same. Sixty-five by one-twenty and.
Smaller because they have the pads.
Sixty-five by one-forty, if it's abutting collector street. Yeah, there's some, like, these look like they're a little deeper than a hundred and twenty. But that's what these would be here. Just for Harry's sake, I, I looked up the plats for the area to the north. And so particularly in this area here, you know, they must have identified that drain tile system coming through here when this property was platted. And there's a drainage and utility easement right here. And here, and then also on this property.
That's including the additional ones that Kate was talking about or?
There could be other private ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there could be other private ones on the eastern part of Joe's property. This is a wetland on that Kate's parcel.
Yes.
And I can see there's also drainage and utility easement that goes out to Nevada. So the county must have required that. I don't know if that's for a drain tile or, or what that is for, but I think Kate thinks that there may be some drain tile in this area that maybe connects somehow and. But those are the official plats as they are today. And that may be something that, well, Nick, their engineer, Nick Polta, is, yeah, he's been good to work with and he has the staff report now, so. He would have this available to him as well. Do you have a chance to review the staff report?
We did, I guess we were waiting to see what kind of feedback the planning commission offered here.
We didn't specifically address, Brandon did ask specifically for feedback about the local road layout within the development and then those local roads as they connect to two fifty-fifth, they don't meet the six hundred and sixty-foot spacing requirement. I, I want to take that back. It's, that is something that's stated as guidance in the city's transportation plan, but it is not in city code. And I did, I did speak with the city attorney about that. She said because it's not, hasn't been carried over into city code, we can't, I mean, we can encourage, we can encourage greater spacing if you think it's necessary. But it wouldn't be.
Those are typically related to making sure there's room for turn lanes. And so that's probably something during the review we look at to make sure if there's a need for a future turn lane as two fifty-fifth keeps extending and growing.
Sure.
That there's space to adequately manage those movements without blocking traffic.
That makes sense.
Well, Rich, do you have concerns then as the, as two fifty-fifth approaches Dakota or Nevada?
I don't know what the actual spacing is, but not really.
This is probably a hundred and forty feet, probably a hundred and forty feet.
So Nevada might be built there unless something changes, but our recommendation is that it not be. So you really, the, it's those two south legs on each side of the park that would appear to be the only questionable ones. Those are just local loops, so.
But the internal ones, you're not really concerned?
No, no, just, just on, on the east, two fifty-fifth, on the major east-west.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't looked at that in detail.
Okay.
My hunch is it can be worked out, but we'll have to talk to a traffic engineer about implications of that particular spacing.
I mean, if, if this intersection needed to be taken out, I think it could be designed around, but.
Where's that?
Here. I'm only reacting to Rich's comment about.
Move it over there to the other one you're saying, that's the comment.
Maybe just move it here or something.
Something like that.
Cul-de-sac this or something.
Yeah, I don't know that there's anything to solve. I think the feedback is good. I'm sure he'll be asking his engineer to make sure that these work from a traffic standpoint. I'm sure he'll be asking his engineer to make sure that these work from a traffic standpoint because we will be reviewing it for that.
Right. That'll be organized.
Yep.
Is there one other thing that you needed specific feedback on?
Just if they wanted to talk in more detail about any of the staff recommendations specifically. And I, I guess, like, specific feedback on your opinion on that road on the northeast corner? Whether it should connect to Dakota or go north? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think, I think it could go north, but, or cul-de-sac out, I, you know, because there are two other roads going north, so.
That's where the ghost plaque could come in handy to inform that better.
Right.
Where's the gas easement? I, I know you make a mention of the, is there a gas easement on this one?
There's a reference to it in the title commitment that was provided.
Just Nick's the southeast corner.
Yeah.
If you look at...
It's probably right here.
...earliest property, the diagonal, the reason that those lots are diagonal, that's where the line runs from southwest to northeast on his piece and then comes up in Nick's...
Just his corner.
...our piece. And so, yeah, that's something we need to illustrate on there for sure.
Harry, did you have anything you wanted to?
No, this was very much like what we talked about at the dirt meeting.
This trail, what is that, when the ten-foot trail, is that because there's a start of a trail down on, on the end of the pavement? Is that what that's for, is the ten-foot?
All of our major collectors are going to have trails alongside of them.
And there's an existing trail on the north side of Two Fifty-Fifth on the Wagner, Land and Wagner property in Highlands. It was constructed with the school, most of it. It was constructed to about, about right here. That was twenty years ago. That existing trail on that development is eight feet. But as the new standard for multi-use trails is, is ten feet. And so the missing segment in Highlands will also be ten and then, because, yeah.
And all the way down Dakota.
Yeah.
The only internal link I'm looking at, thinking about now would be at the north end. You've got those two streets that go north. If you live in one and you want to walk to your neighbor's house, you've got quite a hike via the roadway system. Something associated with going across that north, just linking those two sides together, I think, would be sensible. It's not on the plan, it's an ask, but that would be something you might consider as feedback, just connectivity for pedestrians.
Sure.
Okay, so you would support the annexation of this property for a residential development? Based on this concept with these comments? Okay. We will bring that to the city council. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Did we talk about maybe the Twenty-Fifth, Joe?
I'd have to come back to your...
Okay.
Just let us know.
Yeah, it might be pushing it, but we'll try to move it as soon as we can.
Yeah, let us know what you need from us. Thank you all.
Mm-hmm. Yep, we've advertised for a senior planner. I don't remember if we told you that, that at the last meeting. So somebody that will probably eventually replace me. I'll kind of take a secondary role. We are getting a lot of new development, national builders, some things that we can't make public yet. But we believe that we're going to be, the next couple of years is going to be a big, a lot of development, so. Rather than hiring another entry-level planner, we decided to advertise for a senior planner. The posting has closed. We are hoping to conduct interviews in September and hopefully have somebody on board in October sometime. We've got enough, though, we're looking forward to interviewing.
Sounds good.
Minimum qualifications and, yeah.
And Ms. Davis, did Joe leave or?
Jake went to the City of Prairie Lake, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see.
So his last meeting was in June and then we canceled the July meeting and, yeah.
I don't recall, I must have phrased it over.
Yeah.
So he owns that development up here then too, right? Yeah, okay.
He sold, he sold it to MI Homes.
Oh, okay.
They're a national builder, so. Joe entitled it with preliminary plot approval and then MI Homes purchased it and got it through final plot approval and they're constructing it.
Well, it's looking nice, I mean, they've got a lot of dirt. You can tell where things are going, they already got a house up.
Yeah.
They're moving fast.
Yeah.
Probably got seven house permits already.
Really?
Yeah, we can issue, we can issue two model home permits until the streets are done. But they have all the other permits and just waiting to be issued. They wanted to get them all into review.
He said curb and gutter next week, Rich?
Yep, after that.
Curb and gutter, I was told, would be this week.
Oh.
Whenever that's finished, we'll release all their home permits.
And what are we doing with curb and gutter now? Is it actual surmount, insurmountable?
Insurmountable.
We don't allow surmountal, we have a vertical, two-sixty...
Because then you get people putting up a driveway across it.
Yeah.
There's always some dark burn with those the first five years, but it lasts fifty, a hundred years. So in the long run, they're, they're nice to have for snowplow. You've got something to feel so you're not in people's grass.
Oh, I see, okay. I like them.
I like the way they look.
So, all right, well, that's good. I'll make a motion.
One second.
Aye.